Good evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Sweetwater County Commission Republican Candidate Forum sponsored by the Sweetwater County Library System. I'm Tom Ellis with YO Radio. I'm joined by panelists Ann Jans from The Rocket Miner, Katie Glenn Meyer from Sweetwater Now, and Stephanie Thompson from the Green River Star. Tonight, we will hear from five candidates vying for three spots on the general election ballot. The candidates are incumbents John Colb and Doc Wendling, with challengers Jeffrey Smith, Alan Jarnigan, and Roy Lloyd. The candidates will be answering questions from this panel, but audience questions will be considered if time allows. Turn in questions at the back of the room. The forum will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have three minutes. We will begin with Commissioner Colb.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and viewing this debate. My name is John Colb. I'm 39 years resident of the state of Wyoming. I have a wife who I've been married to for 18 years, Laverne, who puts up with all this. I have two sons. Our youngest son is Rock Springs PD, and my oldest son works for the FBI. I have two daughters. My oldest daughter lives here in Rock Springs, and my youngest daughter's with us, and she's 16 years old. She doesn't really like being here, but she's here today to support and everything. I'm a self-made businessman. I own Alpha Petroleum Service. I'm an electrical contractor, master electrician by trade, and mostly I'm a systems analysis person, which means I get hired to go out up to 200 miles away and fix something before I come back. So, I'm a troubleshooter by nature, and it lends itself well to this job. I also am running as your county, as a current county commissioner. I frankly like this job. I think it fits the county, it fits me. I'm willing to go anywhere, anyplace, anytime for this county. Give 110% every day that I'm out there working for you. And I believe that there's a lot of good leadership here. I serve with a good group of people on the commission. I believe that leadership's an oftentimes confused word with common sense sometimes. Well, there's not much common sense in people, and there's not much leadership in people either. So, I like to believe that I do a good job for you, and I would appreciate your consideration in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randall Doc Wendling. I presently am in my fourth year, middle of my fourth year, serving as a commissioner in the first term, after retiring in the school district, serving throughout the state of Wyoming and Nebraska for over 42 years in education. My bride Carol Wendling is also retired after serving as an elementary teacher for school district number one. We were fortunate enough to raise two really great young men, and one of them is presently a farmer in eastern Wyoming, and the other one is a financial planner and life insurance agent, Lander. The oldest son, John, and Angie have graced us with three grandchildren, and now after 35-plus years of marriage with my bride, we have enjoyed being in Rock Springs for over 25 years. I've thoroughly enjoyed, and I feel I've worked very hard for you, the people of Sweetwater County, as a commissioner, and it parallels the work I feel that I did for you as parents and grandparents and students, because there are some here that are no longer in school, that I had the opportunity to raise at Rock Springs High School. And I say "raise" because we, as educators, firmly believe that we are an extension of the home and of the parents, and for eight hours a day, we get an opportunity to mess up what you, as parents, have done. So, anyhow, but I look forward to having the opportunity to hopefully continue to serve for you as a commissioner for Sweetwater County, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and a special thanks to the library for hosting this and for all of you being here.
There we go. I'm Jeff Smith. Happy to be here tonight, and thank you all for coming out, and we appreciate the time that you spend in being involved in politics and in your community as well. Been married to my lovely wife Leslie for 28 years. We enjoy living here in Rock Springs and thoroughly enjoy Sweetwater County. It's a wonderful place to live. I work at Deer Trail Assisted Living as the executive director there, and also oversee another assisted living that we own in Casper as well. Spend a part of my, each month, up there, a few days helping out. Got four kids. Amanda is my oldest, lives in Delaware with her husband, who's in the Air Force. She just had our third grandchild, their second, Jack, who I haven't met yet. Going to see him here next week. My son Cole, who after graduating from Rock Springs High School, is an apprentice working on autobody, and he says if he has enough money next year to buy all his tools, he'll be able to go out and become a master technician himself. So, he's working on that part. Abigail graduated from Rock Springs High School just this past May. You can find her in the Garden Center at Walmart. Say hello to her. She's the cute blonde one with the long hair. I've worked on the board at Young at Heart for a few years now, enjoyed serving there on the board, and this year I've also been asked to serve on the foundation board to handle the financial affairs of Young at Heart as well. It's been wonderful to do that, and I've gotten to know and work with a lot of great people, including Doc and Reed out there as well, and Clark. So, appreciate these good people that spend their time volunteering as well. Also, pretty involved at church with youth groups, and enjoyed spending a week, just a couple of weeks ago, at scout camp up at New Fork with my son and seven other scouts, and we came back with every scout that we wanted to. So, and no, we didn't have the scout that got lost, although it was that week. Previous to Deer Trail, I worked as a data and trend analyst for SkyWest Airlines for a few years. Prior to that, I owned four businesses, which franchised restaurants. That was challenging, but it gave me a great broad perspective of customer service, finances, and all those kind of things. And prior to that, I worked 11 years as a television sports anchor, finished up out in Oregon, covering back then Pac-10 football and basketball, having a good time doing that. So, earned my master's in business administration degree not too many years ago, thanks to the support of my wife, and taking care of four kids while I was working full-time, and had a job that traveled quite a bit as well. So, I appreciate her. And again, thank you for being here, and I hope we have a good lively discussion tonight, and hope to get to know all of you a little bit better.
I'm Alan Jarnigan. Thank you, folks, for being here. I see many friendly faces out there, people I know around the county. I'm running for commissioner because I was asked to by a coalition of county people. They feel, felt that the current board was not answering their questions and running after them. My wife of 30 years is here with us tonight. We have between us seven children, hers, mine, and ours. Our oldest son, together, is back in Massachusetts, where he works for the Department of Revenue in Massachusetts and the welfare. Running numbers for the welfare so that they can save money, but still help the folks back there. His wife is a doctor. She's testing to get her final degrees. We're very proud of her. Our daughter is a legislative aide for Senator Barasso in Washington, DC. And according to last time he was here, he told the audience that she was one of his main cogs back there. Our other son is over in Laramie, working for a locator service. Goes out to all over the county out there, and also has been down to, right now, he's working in Colorado, locating telephone lines, gas lines, et cetera, so they can drill some more wells down there in Colorado. I hope that I can be of service to the people of Sweetwater County as one of their commissioners. I think there's some changes in direction that we might, that we need to look at. And I thank you all for being here, and see you at the polls.
Good evening. My name's Roy Lloyd, and if any, I've noticed none of the candidates have got the stop sign for three minutes, and most likely, if anyone does, it will probably be me. So, bear with me as I share a little bit about myself. First, I want to thank the library for being here, for having us here, the public for being here, and also the current commission, because as I prepare for this election, spent a lot of time with current elected officials and people in the county offices, and it is quite a job with a lot of responsibility, and really, really the backbone of this community. And so, I don't take this lightly. So, thanks to them for what they've done, and it just makes me excited as I meet with people about the opportunity to possibly serve and join them in this community. A little bit about myself. Was born and raised in Evanston, Wyoming. I've lived in Wyoming my entire life, except for a couple of years when I was in college in South Dakota, but I still actually worked at FMC Trona Mine as a summer hire during that time. My dad actually drove back and forth from Evanston to FMC for 35 years. Often during that time, he would talk about moving to Sweetwater County, and being a born and raised Evanston guy, he would often say, "No, Dad, no." In fact, when we first moved to Green River, I helped coach the Green River Grapplers, and I wouldn't even put on a Green River shirt or say "We are GR" at the beginning of practice, because I truly wasn't Evanston guy. But 14 years later is how long we've lived in Sweetwater County, and during that time, we've really grown roots as a family in Sweetwater County. I've raised, my kids have been raised the majority of their lives in Sweetwater County. My oldest daughter is Jory, who's 23, has two daughters in Grayson and Addison, and her husband Cole. I have a 16-year-old son named Kayden, 15-year-old daughter named Kami Lynn, and an 11-year-old son named Jacob Lloyd, and I'm just really proud of them. We're super involved in the community. We're involved in 4H as a family. I've actually coached Little League football in Green River for 10 years. Currently, I'm the president of the league, run, have ran the wrestling program in Green River for over 10 years, and we've also been involved in multiple other sports and boards throughout the community. I've helped with chamber boards, I've helped with chamber committees. In fact, one of my greatest memories in becoming a resident of Sweetwater County is I used to help coordinate for Dave Hanks and the city with Maricomo at the time, the downtown planner program before the URA took it over. And my kids look forward every year to being part of Rock Springs and helping beautify the city. So, one of the things is even though I haven't been a longtime resident of Sweetwater County and have only been here for 14 years, over that time, I've gone from being a guy that wouldn't wear a Green River shirt to a guy that his whole wardrobe is probably nothing but t-shirts that represent Sweetwater County, Green River, and Rock Springs. And because of that, that's why I want to serve Sweetwater County. We truly love Sweetwater County. I've spent my entire life working for people with intellectual disabilities in the nonprofit world, and my whole life has been about giving back to other people. To me, this is an extension, a way to give back to the county, the citizens of Sweetwater
We will now move on to the question portion of the forum. Each candidate will be allowed a 90-second response. The first question will go to Commissioner Wendling first. What do you see as the biggest problem the county faces at this time, and how would you work on the problem?
The, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. The biggest problem, as there are many things we continue to work for, to continue to grow the county, is, I think, for the most part, is economic development. We have our oil, gas, we have our extraction of minerals and agriculture that we presently have that provide a good foundation for revenue for the county itself. But in the long run, we need to use those as a stepping stone to move in and to diversify as we work. As we work forward in that, one of the things that we're very fortunate, as we talk about diversification, bringing economy, is we do have a partnership in the county with Green River, Rock Springs, facilitate, and the county facilitated by Rock Springs Chamber, and it's called the Economic Development Coalition. Through that process, we are addressing the economic development for this county, and it's two-pronged. First prong, of course, is through jobs and that type of thing, and looking at the gap analysis on retail businesses and seeing what businesses we can recruit to this area. The other aspect is major industry. We're involved in the aspect of working, if it's still around, in Dow. We don't know at this point in time. Elections are up, things could change. But the county has taken a proactive move to addressing that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Much like Doc, I also feel that the economy is probably the biggest concern right now in, within Sweetwater County. As you mentioned, there is a good base, many things that are going well, but the diversity is really something that we need to look at so that we can move away from boom and bust cycles, we can get a more stable and long-lasting population here, people that will want to be here and grow up here and stay here for years and generations to come. With that, I would say you see other areas where perhaps they go chasing after, you know, an apple or a Google or someplace that's building a big service center or something like that, and throw all kinds of tax dollars at them, and it's hard to see how that turns out good for a county or for a community in general. So, while I'd love to attract those, we have to make sure that we do it fiscally responsibly as well. Make sure that we're not giving away the farm so that we attract something that maybe we give $20 million in tax incentives, so they come here, but then it only generates $5 or $10 million for us as well. So, development and making sure that we do that in a smart way is really, I think, the biggest problem, and trying to find a balance between attracting folks and businesses while still retaining financial responsibility, I think, is our biggest problem.
Budgetary concerns. We've seen the downturn in the oil and gas. Yet, we didn't see any cutting of budget until suddenly we ran out of money. So, I think that is one of the first things we need to do, is make sure that the budget can maintain itself and that the county does what it needs to do. In the Constitution, it says to defend, well, to defend is our sheriff's office, so we need to make sure that we have money for the sheriff, money for the fire department, and money for the infrastructure, and then we can start bringing these other businesses in. They're not going to come to a place that has no infrastructure, and as we saw, we've seen Magpul come up here from Colorado because of Colorado's laws. We see another major gun manufacturer going up in the north part of the state. Well, folks, that's what we need to pursue, is people like that who are unhappy in their states with the laws that those states have passed, and the bad attitude of the people or the government toward those entities. And we have a good attitude toward most everything, and I think that's where we need to pursue, these unhappy companies, and bring them in here. But we do have to have an infrastructure to do it, and a lot to offer. We have a no-income-tax state. There's not many of them out there. Thank you very much.
The problem about being fourth in line in a question is a lot of the great responses have already been taken, so I'll take a little bit of a different direction. I do think economic development is a huge part of our community. We've been lucky over the last couple of years to see a little bit of a rebound in the oil and gas, and the budgetary process has been better the last year than it had been previously, the couple, the last couple of years. I look at one word that I think is essential in this community to be successful: collaboration. I think that can be done in multiple and seen in multiple different entities. A, in economic development. I really think part of being successfully in economic development is collaborating with the other communities, Green River, Rock Springs, business partners, and Dow, if it's still around, the Wyoming Business Council, and moving forward. But I also think it's about collaborating with the citizens of Sweetwater County. It's about when there are major issues, such as the wilderness study areas, that we're listening to people, we're taking their input about what's important, and making decisions based upon them. I also think it's essential that as we're making decisions and the hard calls as a county commissioner, that we're doing so in a respectful manner, that treats people with dignity, and even though we may not always agree or disagree, that we work together in a respectful manner. I think that's a huge part of building a community. One of the things, the ways I look at this is, I may not always make a decision that everyone's going to agree with, but I hope to have a relationship with matter of people that they know I sold, that I did so with, working, looking at the facts, working through diligently to gain the information, and thinking of others in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Well, in one word, it's water. I don't, I think it's frankly a lucky point to be going last, but trans-base and water diversion. Future of Sweetwater County is retaining our water. No water, no growth, no future. I think we have to always be vigilant. If there's one thing I can tell you, it's that public lands access is up there too, but water's key. People want to take our water and use it in Colorado, Cheyenne, other places, and they have yet to come up with anything they're going to give us for that trade, and I don't even know if there's something that'd be worth it, because it's our future. So, I say it's water. I think we have to be diligent and aware of what's going on and be able to fight that fight, either here, locally, at state level, and further downstream, maybe at the federal level. And as it comes to development for our county, what we do is make it fertile for businesses to come in this county. Government does not finance businesses. Government makes it an opportunity for people that find one here, and I think I'd like to be a part of that. Water distribution is another key to this. There's quite a few things. I think a lot of the really big issues, the planning and zoning, have been hammered out, but all in all, today, I would put my bet on protecting our water for our future and for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Our second question will go to Jeffrey Smith first. If new resources were available, what one area of county services do you feel would most need those additional resources?
Being in the world that I am, working with the people that I do, I would say taking care of the most vulnerable people, whether that's our seniors, the less advantaged, perhaps the homeless. Those are areas that I think that we need to make sure that the social services are there, and we have an infrastructure available so that they can succeed as well. And so many of these folks have either participated in and contributed to our community in great ways, and as they head down the home stretch of their life, they may need some help themselves. So, making sure the resources are there for them and that we have the programs available to them, I think, is, if we had the dollars, that's probably someplace that I would like to see more money spent, again, as need be, and always happy to hear from the community and have their input as well, but that would be my opinion right off the bat.
Read the question, please. I didn't get it all.
Of course. If new resources were available, what one area of county services do you feel would most need those additional resources?
I think our law and order, and the sheriff's office, the fire department, and those sources that protect us are probably the most important. Social programs are very good, but there are many other avenues rather than government for social programs. Churches, for one. In the past, that's where the social programs originated, was from the churches, and that's where they need to go back to, is through the people and their religion. It's, the government cannot fund everybody. If we want to retain our status as a beautiful state, no income tax and that, we need to watch our pennies and allow the people who can take care of the social structure to do so, and let them use the money in that, in those manners. Government is not there to raise us from birth to death.
I think if we had additional resources in the county, the first thing we would need to take care of is our core government, and ensure that each of our departments have the ability to take care of the citizens of Sweetwater County, making sure we have the right people in the right offices, the right numbers to make sure the jobs are being done in a constant way. I also think if we have additional resources, we still have to look to the future. I think sometimes it's always great to spend and give extra money, but sometimes you have to be able to put a little bit away for the future. I think some other places, I think additional resources would be good, is taking care of our employees in the county. Some of them have received bonuses over the years, but there's not been consistently giving, been able to, the ability to give raises and such to them. That actually decreases our longevity in those offices, because one of the advantages of the county job is the pension ability, and when people don't get raises, they don't see that grow. So, A, I think we take care of our core government, and B, we look to the future, and if the C, the place to look is, you know, we've got to look at diversifying our economy, so looking at potential ways, after we work collaboratively and come up with, collaboratively and come up with a plan, of finding ways to put money in for infrastructure to potentially diversify our economy so we can stay strong as an economy. It's not about just being strong today, it's about finding ways to be strong tomorrow.
Well, all this has to be kept in mind. You have to keep this in mind, that we have balanced budgets. You can't spend more than you take in. County's been pretty darn good over the years, doubling our reserves while doing a $21 million Justice Center project, numerous other multiple million dollar projects. Now, core county, core county government is essential. Now, that's going to have to be a balance now with outside entities that have absolutely zero statutory funding need. We do what we can, though. When we have extra money, we give the money out to those outside organizations, but core county has to be first supported. Next, we gave a two-and-a-half percent coal raise this year. We also implemented a wage study to go through and evaluate all of our compensation that we're currently giving, to make sure it's in line. Some cases, it might be high, and some places, cases it may be low, but that's the first thing that has to be done. Most importantly, we don't lose people in county government. The county government employees stay for a very, very long time, so I tend to think it's a pretty darn good place to work. I look forward to economic development. I think our first best thing to do, once we satisfy those base needs, would be to say to improve our county in the way of the fairgrounds. Say if we improve the venue out there to get an even larger event, that is economic development. That helps the whole community, and the community, the community as a whole can enjoy that, unlike some of the other types of activities.
New resources, can you hear me? New resources and where we'd have been at first. By statute, yes, we need to take care of core government and take care of core government needs, and that also includes our employees. I firmly believe that with regard to our employees and the citizens of Sweetwater County, if there are, as there are new resources, the resources need to first serve the people, not the people serve the resources. And in that frame of mind, core county comes first, along with looking at the people that work for the county. And I agree also with the wage study that's coming in. That's going to put us at a, let us know where we're at and where our improvements need to be. But as we take care of core county, we also need to make sure that core county has the equipment and stuff to work with. And I think one of the things also that we need to look at is revenue increases, infrastructure within the county. We all know that gas and oil is picking up. We also know that it's a slow pickup, so it's coming. But through that time, we need to have the infrastructure in place to handle the things that will be faced, i.e. law enforcement, work at the courthouse, also our build, our road and bridges, and the other core government situations. So, there's going to be a lot out there. I also believe too that, along with that, that we already, like Mr. Colb said, we do fund outside agencies, and that, and will continue to do that to the best of our ability, and will continue to do the best we can with the revenue we have. Our budget has been balanced, we have been able to do things. Thank you very much.
You candidates. Our next question, Alan Jarnigan will answer first. Our next question, Alan Johnigan will answer first. Are there any areas in which the current county commission could improve? And if so, where would you make those improvements?
The involvement of the citizens of the county. I have been looking back through the minutes and there are too many issues where there's no public comment. People aren't there, they don't come, so we need to come up with something, a way to get to the people. If you can't come to the meeting, then we should come to you. If my wife can sit in our kitchen in Jamestown and watch our daughter-in-law graduate from medical school in Dublin, Ireland, there's no reason why the county council can't have an internet source to put the, the meetings into everybody's home and kitchen so that they can watch the meetings, can respond via email, text message, Twitter, a phone call during the course of the meeting and take part in the county council meetings. And I think that's one of the first things that I would work on is trying to have something like that so that the citizens of Sweetwater County can be more involved in the commissioner's business, which is the business of the county.
My turn. Okay. Well, thank you Alan for the outreach.
Mr. Colb, it's actually Roy Lloyd's turn first.
Oh, there was a big delay there, so I thought I was wasting my time. I apologize.
It's okay.
Roy.
I think that's what I would change is how we talk and treat the people in this community. I think that was a great, an example of some things we can move forward with and how we, and how we talk and listen to people. I think that's a huge part in being a commissioner. It's, like I said earlier, I'm not going to make a decision that everyone always agrees with. And if I do, I shouldn't be an elected official because that means I'm not doing my job the right way. But I want to build relationships with people where they can listen to me and I can listen to them and we can move forward in positive ways when we're in disagreement. I think in, we have to really look, you know, I believe we kind of live in a, a feel-good society wherever he gets a trophy and that's not the kind of world I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is that when we have a disagreement, that we do so in a professional manner that's above reproach, that the citizens of the county can be proud of. And that's what I want to work toward is how we can create those relationships so when there are disagreements and there are differing opinions, we move forward in a positive manner.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to bring up that electronic media question. I've been pushing that since I've been elected, wanting to get the meeting streamed live on the internet or some other vehicle so you can hear what's going on at your county commissioner meetings. I've been a proponent of that for years. It's getting closer. I can't, you know, the word, I'm a commissioner, not the commission. John Colb does not make these decisions and everybody just goes ahead and listens to them. And for that, to that end, I, I'm supportive of that. There's some obstacles you have to overcome with public records that have to be put into consideration, but I think it's a great thing. I also think public outreach is a great thing. We used to and probably should start doing again, going out to the small communities and having meetings to listen to what they have to say. In our meetings, I go back to our meetings, they're open to the public. Generally, folks don't show up unless there's an issue that involves them. And I wish they would come more often and they don't, but it's always open. My phone is always open. My, day or night, it doesn't really much bother me. I take a phone call and listen to what people have an issue with and half the time doesn't involve the county, it involves maybe the city or Y dot. But I'm, it's part of my job to help people out, to find out where to go and to get services in government. But I think it's pretty open and it's improving. Thank you.
What can, what can be done? I think first of all, you know, with our meetings presently as they are, yes, I also, like Mr. Colb, we talked many times, we do need to figure out a way to get our meetings so we get more people involved, more people the meetings communicated to, and of course that's through technology. And there are some things that in the future that we need to do to make that happen. So there are some hurdles, like you said, that we'll get worked through, but at the same token, I'm a proponent of that. Because I firmly believe that in order for a commission to be efficient, you need to be able to have avenues of communication with, with, with the constituents throughout the county. We only work for the people of Sweetwater County. They're the ones that we're in office for, they're there to work for. And if we don't know from them what it is they want or find avenues in which we can communicate, have interaction, then government doesn't run smoothly. I'm a proponent also of answering the phone, talk with anybody anytime. Of course, if you're in your office as a commissioner, you're not out there doing much. So I, I will applaud this commission for how much they are out in the community, how much they're getting things done, that type of thing. Our, I just, you know, I firmly believe that communications and relationships, four years ago I ran on a platform of building relationships. That doesn't stop, that continues. That's been my, my long, long life, lifelong goal is to continue to build relationships with people. Thank you.
Doc's going to answer for me. I would say from the, the commission, communication is probably the one thing that I'd like to see changed. As an example, the hospital and all that went on there in the last year or two, probably communication with the hospital board and what was going on there. If there'd been more information shared, more information given, it would have been a little bit easier to avert the things that did happen there. And so I think that communication amongst the departments that have responsibility to the commission is very important. Also, I feel that being a leader and not a manager, so having the vision on the, on the board to have, this is what we need to accomplish, this is not how we get there. We let the good people that run their offices in the, in the county, let them tell us how they should, how we should get there and then let it go from there. If there's a way to, to accomplish a task, I would say, say the assessor. I'm not an assessor. If we need to accomplish something with the assessor, let the assessor's office tell us how best to be done and, and work through it that way. So I say communication with those who work for the county and those who also have responsibility for the county. Opening that up in various ways would be the best way to do things.
Candidate, Roy Lloyd will answer our next question first. If revenue projections indicate a need for cuts in county budgets, would you be in favor of across-the-board reductions or targeted cuts?
One of the comments that Commissioner Colb just said is remember when you're a commissioner, you're one of five. So it's hard to always get your view to go across, but I, the way I would look at it is I believe in strategically looking at the finances and making cuts as required. Not every department can take a 10% cut. Some departments are bigger, some departments are smaller. Some areas are bigger, some areas are smaller, some of the needs are different. We have to systematically look and analyze at the finances and the revenues when we make cuts and make it in a way that we're still not, we're not affecting core government to the point where we can't provide services, but we're doing so in a way that we can continue services in the smartest, most efficient way.
Oh, I believe in targeted cuts, not across-the-board cuts. However, go back to what I just spoke about as a commission. We got five people up there that do get along and believe me, things are pretty contentious at times, you know, because people are passionate in what they believe in. What I first believe in is a balanced budget. And if I, if I can't win the argument with targeted cuts, then I'm going to go with a balanced budget and that's the best I can do. It isn't one person rules once again. It's, it's much more complicated than this. And when it comes to comparing the, the hospital to the assessor, well, I think someone might have to go back and find out how government actually works. Works that the county board of county commissioners, the only elected people here, appoint the people on a board of the hospital board. That's it. The only representation you, the elected, have is the board of county commissioners. So when all else fails, communication breaks down, there's no other choice, financial ruin is right around the corner. Commission has to take action and we did and we saved your county memorial hospital. Hospitals made in excess of a $7 million turnaround year over year because of that change. Was it fun? No. Was it hard? It was, but it was necessary to protect you, the people of this county, to make sure you have a place to go when you need an emergency room. That's what's important to me. Thank you.
With the budget, I've always believed and, and have practiced that in previous business working with school district as well, of targeting where the cuts should come, not straight across the board. But like Commissioner Colb said, as group commissioners up there, first thing we're going to do is balance the budget. Two years ago, it's on the record, I opposed approving the budget because I felt it went too deep and there were areas that were cut too deep and as a result of a 10% across-the-board rather than strategically looking at some of those. If I see that anytime in the future, or if I'd seen it this year, I would have walked those same steps. I truly believe it is better to be, take the time and be more strategic and, and again too, but we have to have a balanced budget and there's five of us and there's only one of me, and so it, it is as it is. You know what? My vote with regard to that, I, I stand firm by it and I, to this day felt, for me, it was the right thing to do because it was the right thing for what I represent. I, I do feel I'm going to go on, I think since Commissioner Colb brought it up and the hospital was brought into the pictures, is there were things that needed to take place. The commission as a whole decided to make that decision and move forward and as a result of, of which there's a lot of things that can't be talked about right now and John didn't mention that, but thank you very much.
Sharing things, awesome. I'm going to make it five for five and say targeted as well. And in my business dealings, that's, that's the way that I've done things as well. There's a deficit somewhere and we need to find, find money, find better revenue or cut expenses. It can't, it can't be across the board generally. It has to be, well, this area or right now it's this department can give up a little bit more, this one might need a little bit more. And it just depends on what it is. And so again, taking the time to, to research that, it's, it's not as easy as saying across the board, we're going to cut this much because we're short this much. So it does take a lot more work and a lot more time, but in the end, I think that that is the, that is the, the, the best choice for all, all involved to make sure that we don't cut things that we really do need and perhaps give a little more money in places that we shouldn't.
Well, I will make it five for five. Targeted cuts usually are the first place you go before you do an across-the-board. There are too many agencies within the county that, that can't afford cuts. So you just have to target those that you feel that can stand a cut. Hopefully, your revenues, that you haven't written a budget that far out exceeds the revenues and there your treasurer will usually be able to tell you what the revenue is going to be so you can create the budget so that it fits the revenues rather than trying to make the revenues fit the budget. Thank you.
Thank you candidates. The next question goes to Commissioner Colb first. What is your management style and how would you incorporate it into your dealings with other county elected officials, staff and outside entities?
Thank you, Ann. My management style is straightforward. I solve problems. That's really all I do. That's what I'm really good at. I got a lot better at talking to people though as time went on being a commissioner. My management style is I work with local, state, say the legislators. And how you have to work around those folks is you have to basically lobby them. You have to be able to talk to those people and get something done. So I can point out House Bill 85 that I successfully changed and it may not affect everybody in this room, but it's an extraterritorial jurisdiction. First year I was in office and went to Cheyenne and got something fixed. Well, you can talk to people, but are they listening? You can talk to people, but do they listen to anything, you know? So I, I think the proof's in the pudding. You do have to talk to people and you have to be straightforward with folks because it's not about emotions you talk about generally, it's about an issue and you have to cut through those emotions to get to the issue. And I think I, it's one of my strong suits. And when it comes to sheriff's department and cuts, our largest budget we have, I want to briefly touch on something is, you know, it's so easy to say you're going to have selected cuts, but you get people up in a seat like where I sit as a commissioner. You make those choices when those people are looking at you. Well, most folks saying they're going to make selected cuts don't. So I just want to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Talk about leadership style. I believe my leadership style is more of a collaborative leadership that focuses on building relationships. The partnership and relationships with government promotes a collaborative working environment. And this results in government agencies running more efficiently. So collaboration is a huge, huge part of it. In a collaborative arena, all government agencies will work towards a solution which benefits local governments. I'm truly a believer that you have to work collaboratively, you have to work towards a win-win. You have to take people and they have to be first on your list of concerns and be taken care of first. And in a collaborative manner, you can make this happen. You can through a collaborative effort, come to a win-win situation, working with outside agencies as well as other people you are. Yes, it does take leadership rather than a management style to focus on a collaborative environment that will de, will build dignity and respect amongst people. So therefore, I truly believe the collaborative style leadership is the best leadership for me and I continue to use it at all times. Thank you.
I feel my personality really allows me to, I like to share my knowledge, my background, the experiences that I've had with others so that I can help bring them along. I'm also happy to learn as well and I certainly don't know everything and I'd like to learn more. And so learning from others who have experience or knowledge in areas I don't, listening to them before making a decision is really a great way to go. I'm also somewhat risk adverse and so very slow to make a decision when there is a great chance of failure and perhaps a small chance of success. Even if that chance of success may be wonderful in the end, if the harm is going to be great, then I'm, I'm slow to make that kind of decision as well. Having empathy for others and, and hearing their point of view and making sure that there are a lot of voices in the room. I don't try to surround myself with people who just agree with me and say, that's a great idea Jeff. My wife would be the first on that list, so she's happy to disagree with me often and most often she's right. So I've learned to listen to her quite well. No need to threaten, bully or, you know, push your point of view in a civil discussion and making sure that you listen to others and respect their point of view. Might not be the same, but make sure you respect their point of view because it is theirs. And then again, having that knowledge collaboratively put together is really the way to make sure that you make great decisions for the future.
My management style is to look at setback and let things simmer out first. Figure out what the problems are and then start attacking them. The, you just can't go into an area and just start pell-mell changing things. Doesn't work that way. So as we, as I would be sitting on the council, I would be sitting there, looking at the problems, talking with the rest of the council members or state legislatures as necessary to figure out how we can fix the problem and how we can change it and make it better for the citizens of Sweetwater County. That's what we're there for is to make everything better for the citizens of Sweetwater County, not anybody else. So we just, we take a look at the problems, we figure out how to attack them and get rid of them and take care of them and send along down the road. Thank you.
I think my management style is more that of leadership. I think management is an important part of being a leader at points, but the foremost part I think would be out being a county commissioner would be being a leader. Throughout my tenure in running nonprofit organizations, in the last 10 years, my organization has seen 23% in cuts from Medicaid and the state funding levels. We've had to drastically make different changes and we've done so by using a leadership style that looks at collaboration, talking to people and using innovation. Because one of the struggles in my, in my field is at the end of the day, we take one of the struggles in my field is, at the end of the day, we take care of vulnerable people. We take care of adults with disabilities and acquired brain injury. We're still able to provide quality services today because of leadership and finding ways to partner and take advantage of different situations to make our clients' lives better. And that's how I see myself as a leader. It's working together to find the best way and find a vision through the hurdles to continue to provide the best services you can. And I believe you do that through being a leader, listening and collaborating. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. This next question goes to Commissioner Wendling first. In your opinion, what is the county commissioner's role as a liaison to the many boards they sit on in the county?
Thank you for that one. No, and we've had these discussions. A liaison's role is purely a pipeline between that board and the rest of the commissioners. To be there and to listen and if asked any questions to advise, but if it's a advisory that, well, wait a minute, there's four other commissioners that need to be involved and have their input, then it's a pipeline back to them and talk about things. So in my understanding is purely, or my style is purely a pipeline between the Board of County Commissioners and that board to transfer of information and answering any questions that need to take place. Thank you.
I feel that the, having had been on boards where commissioners are present, I think they do a wonderful job of representing the county and the people and knowing that the boards that I serve on, there's an interest from the county commission and what is going on with us and the decisions that we're making. On occasion, as Doc had mentioned, we may have questions and ask for their inputs, where things may stand or perhaps how does this work or that work. And so, the advisory as well, I think, is bringing the knowledge that you have as a commissioner is important. But generally, yeah, sitting back, listening, reporting back to the commission so that informed decisions can be made by the commission as a whole because you're not going to accomplish anything by yourself. That's really the manner in which things need to be accomplished.
As a liaison to a board, that's what you are. You're the liaison between the commissioners and that board. Perhaps at the time of the meeting, you may be able to give some advice. It certainly can't be sticking advice. It's got to be, then you have to take it back to your colleagues and decide what to do in that particular instance. It's simple. You're a liaison and when you look at the definition of the word, you're just a representative of someone else and then you all work together to come up to a solution. Thank you.
I think the most important part of being a liaison actually starts at the board appointments. I think when the county commissioners have open positions on boards they're filling, I think it starts there and making sure we're putting the right and qualified people on each board. Sometimes that may mean you have to wait till you get the right candidate and have an empty spot for a while, but I think it starts, the liaison part starts to me when we create those boards and put the right people in those spots. The second piece of a liaison to me is really, they're a resource and an informational piece to create collaboration between the county and that entity. I think we, through the liaison, we create that open communication so those boards and organizations can be successful. But they can only be successful if we put the correct people on the board to begin with. Thank you.
Well, that's not a liaison. The people you're putting on there, those are called board appointments, to be clear. Second, it's a very important role as a liaison. You're that conduit between that board and the Board of County Commissioners. More of a reference point, I think a lot of times, questions might come up on an issue that commission has already taken a stance on and then you convey that to that board. And of course, if the board wants to move forward with something, they go in front of the Board of County Commissioners. It's just something that keeps my co-commissioners and in my case, if I'm reporting, up to date in what's going on at the board. You know, who's the new board president? What are they trying to do? You know, and then we do county commissioner reports on those type of activities to keep everybody up to speed and that's for the public also. So the board appointments are, liaisons are the Board of County Commissioners and you're stuck with whatever the voters vote in for those folks and then you pick, the board does, by a majority of who serves on those boards. I think the system works very well because we have so many boards in this county and it's a very wealthy county and a very large county and we need to have outreach to those boards. So the Board of County Commissioners understands better what's going on. Some of these boards are directly 100% county commission appointed boards, so it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Smith, this question will go to you first. What is your stance on wind and solar energy development in Sweetwater County?
Thank you, Stephanie. Very much for it, done in the right way. I think that we are, it's another one of our natural resources. Our wind is plentiful and bountiful and we are happy to share it with others as well as our solar energy. So many clear days here in Sweetwater County. Where those are, where those facilities are put, that's really the key. And how about transmission lines? Where are those going to go? And so, making sure that we look at the whole picture. It may sound great. It's another way to diversify our economy and not be so reliant on the resources that we do have in use right now, but making sure that we also, it's not in a sensitive area or it's not in an area where public lands that are used by many people. We want to make sure that those considerations are taken into effect as well before we make any decisions, but certainly open to that possibility and would wholeheartedly endorse that.
I'm in favor of alternative energy, if we can hide it somewhere. The, everybody hollers about how ugly an oil well is. Well, I don't know. I think those fans up on top of the hill out there by exit thirty-eight are pretty ugly myself. So if we can hide it a little bit better, yes, I think that we're going the wrong way by devoting thousands of acres to solar panels when we have thousands of acres of roofs where that electricity is going to go eventually. So we should be, California's already passed a law that to put solar panels in the homes. I think that's where they ought to be is in the homes, not taking up a thousand acres out here by Pleasant Construction. There's gravel pit up there. Center Energy and Pleasant Construction did not want that solar farm that's going out there and almost a thousand acres up on Highway three seventy-two. Several citizens didn't want it, yet the commissioners passed it. A two-year approval program, it takes longer than that to get a windmill put up, to do something in your house. That had to be wired somehow, but the BLM had it approved two weeks after the council passed their approval of the solar farm up there. So did BLM, so that's my thoughts.
I truly believe oil and gas and minerals are the foundation of our, of Sweetwater County. But I also think as we look at diversification and the future, whether I like it or not, some of those alternative energies are going to become in play and I think we have to be willing to look at that as it comes, but I really think focusing on oil and gas and minerals as our foundation is key. But like I said, I think we have to be willing as we diversify to look at the other options because I don't, because that's the way things are moving. It's the trend and that's how I look at it. So thank you very much.
Wind. Yes, we wrote the most extensive regulations in Sweetwater County to protect you, the citizens, on how wind energy could be developed in our county. I generally am not a proponent of wind, mostly because, I'll be honest with you, and maybe it's a bit selfish, I'm an astrophotographer and those blinking lights at night don't remind me of the West. And they wanted to put it right top of White Mountain here in Rock Springs and a lot of, the majority of folks were opposed to that. I mean, there's other places that can be put in the county. We have high-quality regulations that were changed to protect us all. So there's probably a right place for them, but I don't want them in a place that disturbs our wide-open spaces, the beauty of Sweetwater County. Everyone's fallen on their sword over public lands. Well, I think our open landscape is something to save and I will always fight for that, keep the view shed as good as it can be for our future generations. Next, solar. I have less issues with solar. We did have a very large process that we took public comment on solar. They bent over backwards to be amenable as possible with all the wildlife concerns and everything seemed to go well. It was a little over, I think a seven hundred acres to be exact, six hundred and forty, a little over section was dedicated for that solar farm. And that's the first solar farm in the state of Wyoming. And I don't mind being a pioneer and a forward-thinking person on solar energy and see where it goes. So I think that was a positive thing. Thank you.
Solar energy, the energy farm that was put out north of town, again, it was looked at very closely. There was opportunity to comment and I am a proponent of solar energy more so than wind energy. The one unique thing that we do have in Wyoming, in Sweetwater County, is we have enormous amount of land, land that's attracted to energy, i.e. alternative energies, solar and/or windmill. But our, like Commissioner Cole said, our planning zoning codes are written to protect our view sheds, protect your view sheds from the windmills. But the solar farms, there are, are a new, and they are coming. They do cover a lot of the landscape, but the unique thing to keep remember that struck me real hard when we were making that decision is, yes, we had the, did the permitting for the building of it, the oversight of it, the hard work that went into it, but overall, everything went to the BLM. They basically are the owners of that land and they make the decisions of permitting for that type of project. So we looked at it thoroughly and we felt it was the right thing to do and being, again, as John commented, a pioneer for solar energy at the time and presently, as it moves forward, not only is it going to be the first one, but I anticipate there will be more coming ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, candidates. This question will go to Alan Jarnigan first. As a candidate for this office, what is the one single most important thing that voters should know about
Thank you. Should ask my wife that question. I'm honest, I'm truthful, I work hard. My sister once called me a workaholic. I don't think I am, but she did. And if I were elected to this commission, I'd give you 24 hours a day if possible, but I do have to sleep once in a while. It's just, like the other gentlemen, I love Sweetwater County. Wyoming didn't choose us, we chose Wyoming. We moved here from Washington State and came here to a wide-open paradise and we love it here and that's one of the reasons I put my hat in the ring to represent you folks on the commission. And I'll give you everything I have to do that. Thank you.
I think it's undedicated. I'm dedicated to everything I've ever taken in a challenge in life, whether it's running a nonprofit, running a small wrestling club that's grown from fifty to eighty kids to over a hundred and twenty kids, whether it's putting together a youth football league or serving on a board in this community. I do everything I can at the highest level of dedication. I know if I'm elected a county commissioner, it's going to be a learning curve. I've had the opportunity to meet with some of the elected officials and talk to county commissioners across the state to learn about what my responsibilities would be and I know it's a huge endeavor I would be undertaking, but I don't take that lightly. And I'm going to, I will work extra hard and diligently to learn what I need to learn and rely on resources to gain the knowledge I needed to be successful. Two years ago, this may seem small to people, but I came up with this crazy pipe dream that I was going to bring up, bring one of the United States' greatest wrestlers to Green River to do a free clinic. After a couple of years of writing grants, last weekend we had over a hundred and ten kids from the state of Wyoming attend a camp with Logan Steber, who's a world champion. It may seem small, but that's the dedication I put into everything I do. I had a dream, I chased it, I made it happen. That's what Sweetwater County would give from me. Thank you.
Dedication, leadership quality, those are things you, I think, look towards a candidate. I give a hundred and ten percent. I know that's a funny word people like throwing around, but I don't give up. I find a problem, I go through the problem and I find a solution. And that's collaboration, that's working with people. That's not just talking to people. What do I have to offer as proven success? Not pipe dreams, not hopes, not wishes, but something that actually happened. And it continues to happen, it will happen in the future if reelected. Thank you.
The strength I'll bring to, continue to bring to the Sweetwater County, citizens of Sweetwater County and my strongest skill, and I've used it for over forty-some years as a school educator and leadership position, and in this leadership position as a commissioner, I continue to use it and that's one of listening. I learned through, for the first three and a half years and will continue to learn over the next several years, that in this job, it's like drinking water from a fire hose and that's what it's all about. And in order to get through that, you better do more listening than talking. I truly believe my greatest strength I'll bring to you is listening and I'm a man of my word and I'll work hard for every one of you in this county if I'm reelected as your commissioner. Thank you.
I'm a good listener. I am able to take the things that I learn and make sure that I put them to good use, make good decisions that way. I'm a solid leader. I like to be able to collaborate with others and make sure that as I take in different points of view as decisions are made, that we move forward together. If a vote is a split decision, I think that it's important to make sure that, once that decision's made, that we move forward and try our best to make sure that the success comes from it. I'm not one to hold grudges or to belittle others, but to move forward and make sure that we do the best we can for Sweetwater County. And so, listening to all of the people here and the people of Sweetwater County to make sure that it is the best that it can be, that's really, I think, the best trait that I would bring.
Unfortunately, time won't permit any questions from the audience, so we're going to move on to closing statements. Each candidate will have three minutes and we'll start with Alan Jarnigan.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis and panel members. It's been a real learning experience for me this evening. And again, it's good to see a lot of friendly faces out there, folks that I know from around the county and people who have supported my endeavor here. As your commissioner, I'll be out there talking with you, working with you and expecting you to tell me what you want done on the commission. There's a lot to do in this county and I'll be up to the task to take care of it for you. Again, we'll see you at the polls. Thank you very much for your attendance and your time here this evening.
Before I start, I just want to thank everyone for letting me ramble because this has been quite an experience. It's my first time up here, but it's one I'm proud of. It's an experience that I'm excited about to have the opportunity to serve the people of Sweetwater County. Over the last fourteen years, I can truly say my family has truly grown roots in Sweetwater County and we truly love being here. It's an understatement. It's everyone's here. That's why they're here. They love Sweetwater County. It's why they're in the audience. It's why they're watching on Facebook or any of the other live media, live media showing this forum because they care about this community. They care about this county. And I think, and I know if I'm elected, I will use my dedication, my leadership and my excitement to bring new ideas and perspectives to this, to the county commission. I won't take any of the issues lightly. I'll work collaboratively and I'll listen. I won't take any of the issues lightly, I'll work collaboratively, and I'll listen. I think listening's a lost art in this, in this world, and I think it's an important skill that I do have, and I think together, we can work together to continue to make Sweetwater County the place that everyone loves. Thank you very much.
Well, I like to start off by saying what I can't do. Can't play the piano, and I certainly can't sing, but I will tell you what I can do. I can work here locally, work with my co-commissioners, which I have, and it's not always been easy, but I've always respected them. You work with everybody, you try your best to do your best for this county and for you folks. At state level, I work with the House, Senate people. Of course, that's getting a rapport. You get the, they get to know you, and they, and they trust you, and trust is a key commodity you can't squander. Without it, you got nothing. So, I think trust is a, is a, is a part of this. At the federal level, I've gone back to DC, and you might ask, well, what in the heck's a commissioner going back there for? Well, I went back there to talk about the uranium industry, and how there was dumping in the world and depressing the rain, the world uranium prices with the Wyoming County Commissioner Association and, uh, Waco. So, there is places for us to go, more than here locally, because as the story goes, if you're not ordering off the menu, you're on it. So, you have to be involved, and you have to be part of the system, uh, whether you like it or not, whether you really like the fellows you're working with or not. I always, I enjoy working with people because it's always a challenge to understand people when you listen to what they're, where they're coming from, what their concerns are, because you go, you go to any bigger group, and, uh, they have other problems, and you have to sell your problems to them, or hitch a ride with another group to, to get something better for this county. Uh, and to that end, you know, I, I did mention House Bill 85. It was the first bill I was involved with that stopped, uh, extraterritorial jurisdictional authority from the cities. Now, maybe that doesn't sound so great if you're living in the city, but what it meant was, folks in the county had no representation. They didn't vote for anybody in the city, it was a big problem. Well, I didn't know how to solve that problem when I was told about it. The person that told me was very upset that I didn't tell him what I was gonna do. Well, I solved it. Solved it with help of legislators and, and testifying in subcommittees. That's what you do as a commissioner. That's part of what you do, besides balancing $176 million budget, besides making tough choices on who gets what and why, and that all has to be justified. And I know some folks feel uncomfortable on trying to justify what the money's going to, but my, I'm an elected official charged with making those hard decisions for you. And so, lastly, my integrity. Integrity to do the right thing when you're not looking. Integrity to do the right thing when I'm out of town, that I'm always representing you, and I'm always trying to do as good a job as I can, and I don't always do great. I, I'm successful most of the time, but there's failures that I learn from. And I, and I like that opportunity that I've been given by you folks electing me as county commissioner. It's made me grow as a person, to be a better elected official, and I thank you for every day I can do that. Appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Upon completing four years, these four years, or three and a half years as Sweetwater County Commissioner, and prior to that, the 40-plus years in education, the leadership skills and qualities I've acquired while serving in these arenas are the same skills I brought to the commission and hopefully serve successfully. I will continue to use these same leadership skills to facilitate a collaborative working relationship with Sweetwater County businesses, government agencies, communities, and individuals, building bridges and relationships. As a commissioner, I will continue to work for all of you, the people of Sweetwater County, and do the right things for Sweetwater County. If you feel I've lived up to my promise to you, it would be my pleasure to be your commissioner representative on the Sweetwater Board of County Commissioners for another four years. I would appreciate your vote. I also, at this time, would like to thank the library, the media, as well as you, as people of Sweetwater County, that are listening and here presently and taking the time to, out of your lives, to attend this particular event. Thank you.
Uh, there's a saying in politics that, uh, you should vote for the person who promises least, because then you'll be the least disappointed. Um, I don't have a lot of promises, uh, but I can promise you that I will work hard, I can promise you that I'll be honest, I can promise you that I will, uh, listen to you, and I can promise you that I will be fair. And, um, for those of you who don't know me, feel free to find somebody who has had interaction with Jeff Smith and, uh, has worked with him, and find out from them what kind of a person I am. And I think that you'll find that, uh, I'm, uh, a person of integrity, who works hard, and tries always to be fair, sympathetic for others, and, um, I will bring all of that to the commission. Um, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to be in this forum and to get the word out, and would very much appreciate, uh, your vote here in the primary on August 21st.
Thank you to the candidates for participating in this forum, and to everyone who has joined us this evening. Uh, we'll now take a short break and come back for the Republican Sheriff Candidate Forum.